The Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that my colleagues and everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. Please rise as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do not have any awards or recognitions this evening. Dr. Spence, we are looking forward to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the Board. I am excited to be here with you this evening and share with you and our community five things that you need to note this month. Number one, I'm thrilled to share, speaking of recognitions and awards, I am thrilled to share that the school division has seen another incredible success with our graduation rates. According to data, which was just recently released by the Virginia Department of Education, our class of 2018 had the highest on-time graduation rate, 93.3 percent, and the lowest dropout rate at 3.8 percent on record. And while this is an outstanding achievement and celebrates the work of our students and the dedicated efforts of our school, this data is also impressive in a larger context. This year, we beat state averages for both on-time graduation and dropout rate, and our dropout rate was the highest in all of Southampton Roads. So congratulations to all of our graduates. I'm sorry, our graduation rate was the highest, yes it was. And our dropout rate was, certainly was the lowest, but our graduation rate was the highest. So congratulations to all of them. Did I say dropout rate? See how that starts? So congratulations, Mike get that right. So congratulations to all of our graduates, their families, and our schools. Second, I do want to take a moment to thank our teachers, staff members, administrators, and families for their work and effort in producing our first virtual learning day of the year. As the Board is aware, these days were created to help expand students' independent learning out of the classroom, and as a byproduct, provide some flexibility in the school calendar. And from what I saw, heard, and experienced from my own children's assignments, the day was a successful showcase of redefining what learning can look like and how it can be delivered, and we look forward to looking through that effort and figuring out how we can continue to tweak and improve that. At number three, as you just heard in your workshop, we are, well, as you're going to hear in a moment after this meeting in your workshop, we are already starting the work of building the foundation for our next strategic framework. And tomorrow, we're going to be launching a virtual town hall for our students, parents, teachers, and community members to give us some feedback and insight on what the division is doing and should be doing as we move forward. This town hall will be available on vbschools.com, and families will receive an alert now message tomorrow afternoon with a direct link to that town hall. We'll learn more about that after the meeting tonight. Fourth, last week, the division held a small celebration and gathering for our National Board Certified Teachers. Here in Virginia Beach, you should know, we have 144 National Board Certified Teachers, which is fourth highest in the state of Virginia. In addition, VB CPS currently has the second highest number of candidates in the state of Virginia working on their certification. According to the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, this certification's the most respected professional certification available in K-12 education. This is a voluntary certification system. It's based on high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. It takes anywhere from three to five years to complete. So congratulations to our current NBCTs, and best of luck to those who are working on their certification. And finally, at number five, I do want to remind our community and our families that the Division's Navigating the Journey event is taking place next Tuesday, October the 16th, at the Virginia Beach Convention Center, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. There will be more than 50 exhibits for students and families to come and visit and learn more about all of the Division's offerings, beginning with pre-kindergarten all the way through to college readiness, to support our students' success. And for more information on this, feel free to visit vbschools.com. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clark, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the September 25th meeting. Motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Mrs. Holtz. The voting board is open. Let the minutes reflect that Mrs. McLeod abstained. Mrs. McLeod, was your abstention due to your absence on September 25th?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The minutes of the September 25th meeting have been approved. As we discussed in our workshop earlier this evening, if there is no objection, we will amend our agenda to move Information Item A, which is the Resolution Regarding Reversion and Revenue Actual Over/Under Budget Funds for Fiscal Year 2017-18, from Information A to Action Item B. The Chair will entertain a motion to, is there any objection? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Mrs. Riggs has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Voting board is open. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have three resolutions. Mrs. McLeod will read the first resolution for disability awareness.
Whereas Americans with Disability Act of 1990 was founded on four principles, inclusion, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and equality of opportunity for all people with disabilities. And whereas the Virginia General Assembly has designated the month of October as Disability History and Awareness Month to increase public awareness and respect for persons with disabilities, to inform the public concerning their many contributions to society, and to emphasize the abilities and rights of persons with disabilities rather than their exceptionalities. And whereas public schools, institutions of higher learning, the business community, civic organizations, and other interested entities are encouraged to promote Disability History and Awareness Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the Virginia Department of Education's 2016 Child Count reported, the Virginia Public School Division served 168,469 students with disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and the Virginia Beach City Public Schools served 7,926 students with disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Act. And whereas the Virginia Beach City Public Schools believes in having the highest expectations for students with disabilities, and believes that students with disabilities make significant academic and social progress when educated as appropriate in general education environments. And whereas it's necessary to increase public awareness, knowledge, and understanding of disabilities, the rights of persons with disabilities, and to foster the culture of mutual respect and equal opportunities for all in our schools, businesses, and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of October 2018 as Disability History and Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in the various school activities during Disability History and Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. McLeod. Welcome. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Manning to read our second resolution this evening for Bullying Prevention Month.
Whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and may happen on and off school grounds. And whereas it is important for Virginia Beach parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has a strategic focus on anti-bullying and to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, through sustained and dedicated efforts, has implemented programs for all employees and students that recognize a commitment at all levels to raise awareness of bullying and its prevention. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designates the month October 2018 as Bullying Prevention Month in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in Virginia Beach City Public Schools' classrooms during this time. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Mr. Edwards is recognized to read our third resolution for Filipino-American Heritage Month.
Resolution, resolution for Filipino-American History Month. Whereas, one of the nation's greatest strengths is its vast diversity, which enables Americans to see the world from many viewpoints. And whereas Filipino-Americans are an integral part of that diversity. And whereas it is imperative for the good of our nation that schools continue to build awareness and understanding of the contributions made by Filipino-Americans. And whereas, through the study of these contributions, all students may find role models whose participation, commitment, and achievement embodies the American spirit and ideals. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the importance of multicultural diversity education within our school system. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of October 2018 as Filipino-American History Month, whose theme is turning points. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in various school activities during Filipino-American History Month. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Also, under the consent agenda this evening, we have the Evaluation Readiness Report for English as a Second Language Program, K-12, as we heard this report in information at our last meeting. And Item C on the consent agenda is the religious exemptions that were included in our agenda information. The Chair will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Melnick has made the motion, Mrs. Felton has seconded. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. The motion is made by Mrs. McLeod, seconded by Mrs. Manning. Is there a discussion? No. Personnel Administration and Administrative Appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce any new administrators?
I would, thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask Sandra Woodward to stand up, please. And so, Ms. Woodward has served as a historical interpreter and program manager with the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. You may recognize her if you've listened to WHRO as a senior producer and host in Hampton Roads Public Broadcasting, and I am pleased that this evening you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the coordinator of Public Relations in the Department of Media and Communications. Congratulations. I understand you have a guest with you.
Yes, this is my husband, James Holtz.
Good evening, everyone. My surprise.
Thank you for being here. Also, although he was previously appointed, I think he was transitioning from Buffalo, New York, and so we're pleased to have him here this evening. We wanted to introduce to you David Dent, if I could ask you to stand up. David has served as an Assistant IT Operations Manager in the Virginia Employment Commission, a technical manager with Northrop Grumman and with SAIC. And I'm pleased that you did approve him at our last meeting to serve as the new Director of Technology Infrastructure in the Department of Technology. Thank you, David. That's all, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Budget Resolution Regarding Reversion and Revenue Actual Over/Under Budget Funds for Fiscal Year 2017-18. The motion is made by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Ms. McLeod. Is there a discussion? Mr. Hansiker will present the resolution, and then we will open this up for discussion and our questions.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Vice Chair McDonald, and School Board members, and Dr. Spence. Just a brief PowerPoint presentation to cover the information that's in the resolution, and just go right to that. This first item is the reversion from the athletic fund. We have several of the funds that we do revert, funds back to the city, not all of them, but several. Next one is, this is a reversion for Green Run Collegiate. You can see the amount there. Next one is the version of the operating funds. You can see the $22 million three there. Those items total the $22 million eight, and those are the version funds. In addition to that, Revenue Sharing Formula also specifies that if revenues in the streams that are in the Revenue Sharing Formula agreement, if the revenues exceed the budgeted revenues, the school system gets those funds. And so, those revenues did exceed the budget through June 30th of this past, this current year. So we will get an additional million five, which brings our total of reversions to $24 million four seventeen. Spending plan for those reversion funds, which we will submit as a resolution to the city tomorrow after you approve it tonight. First item is the, click it on out, yeah. That's the funds, $6.8 million, that we used, one-time funds of last year's reversion to balance the current year budget. With the possibility that we could have a shortfall in next year's budget, we'd want to go ahead and protect the same amount in the current reversions, just in case we need them for balancing next year's budget. We want to put $205,000 back into the athletic fund for some of the needs that they have in athletic program. We have in the current year a shortfall in the risk management fund, so we're going to go ahead and take $2 million of the reversion money, make that fund stable for the current year, and you'll be seeing us also increase the base budget next year for the risk management fund in the same amount. We have a project to, for an office addition at Plaza Annex, which will enable us to move the staff from Alaskan Road, $6 million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's a two-year project. We want to go ahead and secure those funds and earmark them for that project over the next two years. And this is a project of $2.8 million under renovations and replacements, also energy management and sustainability. We'll set those funds aside, and the specifics of how we'll spend those monies, we'll be coming back to. $2 million for replacement school buses. This moves us further ahead in that backlog of replacing some of the older buses, about 20 buses. $750,000 will enable us to replace some of our older, high mileage, and in some cases in significant disrepair maintenance vehicles. Could be trucks or other kind of maintenance vehicles that we have. We have an ongoing project of replacing the whiteboards we have with interactive screens. What do we call them, Dr. Spence?
Panels.
Panels, all right. That gives us a good start. This is a multi-year project, and you'll hear us coming back. We'll also try to build some money into the next year's base budget to continue on this And this project is the implementation of some of the recommendations of Blue Ribbon Committee on School Safety, $1 million. Use those funds for various purposes. Some of the purposes are listed here. There could be other needs beyond that $1 million in the future, but this gives us a good start. And finally, the remaining balance, we'll be using to replace some of the older classroom furniture in Princess Anne High School with new and more flexible furniture in that school. Those furniture, that furniture that we're buying, will also be able to be moved in once the replacement for Princess Anne High School is completed. Madam Chairman, that is the details of what we're recommending for the reversion funds. Those things are articulated in the actual resolution that I've put at your places, and that would be what you're voting on, is the resolution.
Is there further discussion, and do we need someone to read the budget resolution? Mr. McDonald?
I think Mr. Hansiker has pretty much covered point by point, but I'm happy to read it if you'd like me to.
I would love it.
Okay.
He can say the numbers.
I haven't warmed up today.
Scratch budgeting.
Budget Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year 2017-18 Reversion and Revenue Actual Over-Budgeted Funds. Whereas on September 25th, 2018, the School Board was presented with a summary of the unaudited financial statements for fiscal year 2017-18, year ending June 30th, 2018, showing the reversion amount to the city's general fund. And whereas $100,055 was reverted from the Green Run Collegiate Charter School Fund, $22,334,199 reverted from the school operating fund, and $447,710 reverted from the athletics fund. And whereas the estimated total amount available for reapropriation is $22,881,964. And whereas the city is currently indicating a fiscal year 2017-18 revenue over, actual over-budget of revenues included in the revenue sharing formula, of which the school's portion is $1,535,767. And whereas the net reversion funding available for reapropriation is $24,417,731. And whereas on October 9th, 2018, the School Board supported the Priority Needs Spending Plan as proposed by the administration. And whereas the administration recommends the following for available funds, in the amount of $24,417,731. $6,800,000 to be reapropriated to the school special reserve fund to cover possible revenue shortfalls in the fiscal year 2019-20 school operating fund, 115. $205,000 to be reapropriated to the athletics fund, 119. $2 million to be reapropriated to the risk management fund, 614. $9,780,000 to be reapropriated to the capital improvement fund, Project 1-184 Plaza Annex Office Edition, $6,980,000. Project 1-003, Renovations and Replacements Energy Management Sustainability, $2,800,000. $5,632,731 to be reapropriated to the school operating fund, 115. For replacement of school buses, regular education, $2 million. Replacement of white fleet vehicles, $750,000. Interactive whiteboard replacement, $1,500,000. Safe schools, cameras, updated computers, fencing and repositioning the security kiosk, $1 million. That period should be a comma. New and flexible replacement classroom furniture for Princess Anne High School, $382,731. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach approves the recommended uses of the fiscal year 2017-18 reversion and revenue actual over-budgeted funds as presented by administration. And be it further resolved that the School Board requests that the city council approve the reapropriation of fiscal year 2017-18 reversion and revenue actual over-budget funds shown above, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, and that the clerk of the board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of city council, the city manager, and city clerk.
Adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach's 23rd day of October 2018, is there further discussion? Mrs. Manning?
Well, first, I would like to say thank you, Mr. Hansiker, for you and your staff, all the hard work that you've put into this. You've done a great job. And I agree with everything on here, except I do still have a concern with the $2.8 million. And I really appreciate my colleagues accepting my recommendation to bring the school start time topic to our agenda next month. Thank you for agreeing to do that. But I do think that we should have had that discussion prior to this resolution, and for that, that's the reason that I cannot support the resolution. But I appreciate everything else in the resolution, Mr. Hansiker. Thank you.
Is there further discussion, Mrs. Weems?
I think we should add a sound system for the dais, but maybe it's too late. Maybe that could be in the $2.8.
That was a note I wrote.
Really?
Yes, you can speak to that.
It's probably a good time as any to speak to that and indicate that we actually have money in the current capital budget to take care of that, and we have worked with school board leadership, and we will be replacing the sound system. The system is sufficiently old that there are no longer replacement parts available, so we really have no choice except to replace the system.
Yay, okay, thank you. I actually have another comment, but see, it never hurts to ask, right? And look how quick that was.
Ask and you shall receive.
That's right, I love it. Okay, we had a lively discussion, a workshop, obviously, and I appreciate the superintendent and our CFO doing what they were tasked to do, and that is to prioritize according to what they thought the census was. I'm not going to repeat what I said in the workshop, because I think my colleagues know what I think about baseball and softball lights. But because you changed this wording to renovations and replacements, so, if I'm, I just want to clarify. So if we have the vote, like Ms. Manning said, on the school start times in a couple months, and again, I haven't made up my mind on that, and probably not many of my colleagues have, and we decide to change the times, and we, so, and then because of that decision, we know that we need lights in our baseball fields and softball fields, we would use that for this. But if we decide to vote and not change, and keep everything the same, we would not need lights, and we could vote whether we want lights or whether we could put this in the whiteboard panels. Am I correct to say that? Okay. I appreciate the compromise. I wasn't going to support this, but because of that compromise, I feel that I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The resolution has passed. Thank you, Mr. Hansiker. Next, we have under information, this evening, we have the State Accreditation and Federal Accountability Status of Our Schools 2018-2019.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Lisa Baniki, Executive Director of the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, and this evening I will present the 2018-19 State Accreditation Ratings for Virginia Beach Schools. As you are aware, changes to state accreditation were approved by the Virginia Board last November. I'll start this evening with a brief overview of the changes to the standards of quality as they relate to accreditation calculations. As a reminder, student achievement is no longer comprised of just passing SOL tests. It combines three success criteria to calculate a combined rate for English and math. The first success criteria is passing the test. For science, the pass rate is all that is calculated, but in the area of English and math, there are additional success criteria considered. For grades four to eight, reading and math, there's a second success criteria of student growth. Students who do not pass the reading or math test but show growth based on established progress tables count as successful. There is no SOL student growth applied for students in high school. Additionally, students identified as English learners who do not pass the reading test and do not show SOL student growth in reading but show gains on their annual English learner assessment count as successful. Remember that achievement for history is no longer part of the accreditation system, however, history is still required to be assessed. As you may recall, accreditation includes additional indicators to determine the status of a school. Using the same Using the same combined rate calculations that we just reviewed, data is disaggregated by reporting groups for reading and writing combined and mathematics. The expectation is that each reporting group will meet the same benchmark as the overall group of all students. 75% for reading and writing combined and 70% for math. Chronic absenteeism is calculated for each school. A student is defined as chronically absent if the student misses 10% or more of the school year. High schools must have a graduation and completion index of 88 points or higher. The expectation is that high schools will have a dropout rate of 6% or lower. And finally, a college and career readiness index was added as an indicator. The definition for a student meeting the college and career readiness index is that students have received credit for advanced coursework, have earned a CTE credential, or has participated in a work-based learning experience. This piece will come into play starting in 2021, 2022. Unlike previous years, schools have been identified under each indicator with a performance level of one, two, or three. Level one, at or above standard, indicates that a school's achievement on the specific indicator demonstrates performance at or above benchmark, or adequate improvement in the indicator based on performance benchmarks. A level two, near standard or improvement from below standard, indicates that a school's achievement on the specific indicator is below the performance benchmarks but close to the range of measurement for the level one performance level. Level two may also indicate improvement from level three. And level three, below standard, indicates that a school's achievement is well below the performance benchmarks. And here are the expected performance levels for the achievement indicators. You'll see the indicators listed on the left, and then the expected benchmarks for each of the performance levels in the colored areas, level one, level two, and level three. And also want to note that improvement can be met by decreasing the assessment failure rate by 10% or more. Here are the expected performance levels for the other school quality indicators that we've previously seen. Improvement is defined at the bottom. When each school quality indicator is identified as level one or level two, the school would be identified as accredited. When a school has any school quality indicator identified as level three, the school would be identified as accredited with conditions. When a school or school division fails to implement school division or school corrective action plans according to planned timelines, or has taken no action on identified strategies and interventions, the school is reviewed for potential designation by the board as accreditation denied. In regards to state accreditation, are you ready? For the second year in a row, 100% of our schools have been identified as accredited for the 2018-2019 school year. I'm nodding along like I did that, yeah. Yay us. Didn't mean to take credit for that. The news is very exciting for our schools and all BBCPS staff who support our schools in reaching their goals. And we celebrate this wonderful news and other successes in our division, and we will remain focused on continuous improvement. Schools have created data-driven goals and are working on implementing aligned strategies that focus on student success. Throughout the school year, school and central office staff will monitor goals and strategies and engage staff and align professional learning as needed, and make adjustments to their improvement plans as data is collected and analyzed. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Mrs. Manning?
Thank you for simplifying this for us. When I first heard it was six months ago, I was like, how is this going to work? One question about the work-based learning experience. How is that defined and how will students get credit for it? Do you know?
I do not. When I said I'd be happy to address these questions, I didn't really mean it. Tragically, God is a trained to be, but Don was kind enough and Dr. Spence can probably answer when this is awkward.
Yeah, I can, I can tackle that one.
I know. I was like, no question.
I can tackle that one. So generally speaking, the, what, what, our students would experience as cooperative education would count, internships would count, externships would count, but the state hasn't released guidance on exactly how they're going to count it yet. But we do, having had conversations with the state superintendent, we do know that those, those three areas will be areas that would count.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Baneki.
You're welcome.
The next item in information is the policy review committee recommendations. Mrs. Lanetti will present the recommendations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, school board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Cami Lanetti. On behalf of the policy review committee, we're going to be going through a number of different policies and regulations. First one up is 4.6. 4.6, we are titling healthy work environment. This was actually a requirement through the general assembly this year that we have a policy whereby employees can deal with concerns that they might have in the work environment. Quite honestly, there is not a lot of guidance right now from the Virginia Department of Education, so we went ahead and developed a policy that we thought would accurately reflect what was intended by the statute. This will be a brand-new policy for us that we put into effect, and then the human resources department will monitor how complaints are managed to this particular policy. Do you have any questions on this policy? Next policy moving on is 4.14. We're finishing up a couple policies that were left over from the review on section four, which has to do with personnel matters and human resources matters. One of the areas we needed to work on was alternative work schedules and what a standard work week was. And doing that, this is, was a particularly outdated particular policy we needed to update to reflect our current practices. So there are significant changes in this section. It's some, it's not new for how we've been doing it, but it is recognized that there are some differences also with the changes in VRS and some of the leave policies that came in for the hybrid one and hybrid two employees. We needed to have that reflected into the policy. So all that was put into place to deal with how we are currently managing this. These are fairly technical questions. If you have anything, I'd have to probably refer it over to the human resources department to answer questions for, but these are, our current practices are currently reflected now in the policy as opposed to the outdated policy we had before. With no further questions, we'll go on to policy 4.22. This has to do with drug alcohol testing of employees holding the CDL. This is set by federal law. We don't have a lot of flexibility in how we manage this, but this deals with anybody who's man, who's driving one of our commercial vehicles, buses. We have a lot of other vehicles that are also controlled by that. There are very strict rules on safety issues and testing that has to happen. There is not a lot of flexibility as to how we have to do this. So this reflects pretty much what you will see exactly in both the federal and state requirements for the CDL drivers. And that's a fairly long policy that was also a little bit outdated, needed to be updated to reflect the current regulations. Moving on to policy 4.91. This was originally called student teachers. We have a lot more than student teachers right now, the different designations for the individuals that come in, both students, student teachers, practicum teachers, and the interns, or a lot of different names we use for them and procedures and how we have to handle them and monitor them. So we pretty much completely rewrote in this particular policy. We broke it out into what we call observation students. Section two would be practicum students and interns that are non-instructional. Practicum, section three is practicum students, student teachers, and interns that are instructional, or supervision, how we monitor them, and other requirements that we have on them, how we're going to handle payments if we are, if our supervising teachers are being paid, how we handle evaluations, and some of the general requirements we have as to both TB testing and background checks required. The concept is not different from what the policy, but this is broken out to more accurately reflect the different levels of interns, the fact that we have both teachers and others, not just instructional interns coming in to work with us on a daily basis. There are no questions on 4.91. We're going to move on to 5.1. 5.1 is under the section that has to do particularly with what we call pupils or students on there. This, this particular policy has to do with the general extent of school authority. This came on my recommendation to change. We've had a series of cases in there that are not actually reflecting some of the things we are currently seeing, particularly social media cases. I know you see these in student discipline. We are seeing them more and more show up, things that are happening in the community, social media, things that are coming in that are affecting our school environment. And we needed to update this. In one particular, we had a case in state court recently with a student who'd made a threat, went up on social media on there, and it became a problem for us because the judge said, I'd like to get you, it was very clearly a threat to kill one of your administrators, and I would like to deal with it, but when I look at your policy, you've not extended beyond school or school-sponsored events. This happened at the evening on a weekend, although it greatly affected the school environment on there and was a serious concern to us. I don't show under your policy, I can do that. And he quite honestly said to me, Ms. Lanetti, I have no idea why you've not updated this policy to reflect the current practices, because we all know social media is a big issue for you in schools. My answer to that was, yes, sir, you're correct. We needed to correct this. So we, we've expanded this out. So in addition to what you're seeing here on the, what you would have seen, which was originally, you have responsibility for them, it trends to and from school, en route to school or at the bus stop, while riding the school buses, wouldn't affect before. We also expanded it out to other vehicles because we do, we have students on more than just school buses. Also, while using school division equipment and computers, the school provided networks, we're finding again, as we've now moved into Chromebooks, we have the potential for students to be taking activities on networks outside of our school realm, in the schoolhouse and this. While outside of school hours or school days, the school administrators determine the student's conduct causes or has a potential to cause substantial material disruption to the educational environment. Again, I know from your student discipline cases, you are seeing more and more of these situations where although it did not happen during the school day, it caused considerable disruption to the school environment. Threats are an easy example, but we also have a lot of bullying and cyberbullying going on that is creating problems for students coming to school that are dealing with those issues that they're seeing at night, they're seeing on the weekends. And again, as we've mentioned, this is the bullying prevention month, and we're dealing with that. Those are issues we need to be able to take responsibility for when they disrupt our educational environment. Also talking about when the student is a subject of an investigation, arrest, petition for review, probation, and sentencing for criminal conduct unrelated to school matters. This has actually always been in our policies, having to do with students that are charged in juvenile court or being tried as adults. We just never included in this policy. So a lot of times, parents will be looking at the policy, not understanding that state law allows us to make a decision on your placement depending on certain types of criminal conduct. Again, that's not a change, it's just we put it in one place so families could find it. Also, section seven, when public attention or scrutiny of student causes or has a potential to cause substantial material disruption to the educational environment. So sometimes there are things that are outside of what we consider threats or bullying, but student causes something, something happened into the community that causes a great deal of disruption for us, we might need to be able to take jurisdiction over that. And eight, when, when school authorities determine there are unique circumstances that justify the need to take action against students. With the rate that technology is advancing, we can't even anticipate what our students are getting into, as you know, as well as I do, seeing this presentation, our caregivers could do more than I could do with a computer. So we need to be able to anticipate where they might be going, and that's what this particular section says in there. So this is a new, it's not a new policy, but it's a great expansion, and I think it's very necessary to do that in there. So we're going to propose that to make it clear that we will take jurisdiction over those matters that are affecting the school environment or the ability for students or staffs to be able to function in the school environment. While looking at the particular threat case, coming out of two other cases that we had that both ended up in state court for us recently, we realized we needed to deal with threats. Mr. McDonald has for several years now said in student discipline cases, we need a better threat policy because this is becoming an issue for us, and our old one was a little outdated. We did have threats in general policy regulation 536.2. For those of you who are asking, why are we looking at regulations? State law does require when you are disciplining a student, the school board has to look at and approve student discipline regulations in addition to policies. So in regulation 536.2, which starts off with false fire alarms, bomb threats, 911, hoaxes, radioactive things, we had our threat assessment policy in there. That was a requirement a number of years ago by state law that we had to have a threat assessment procedure in place when we determine either a student, the staff, and now also individuals coming onto our school property, we have to go through a threat assessment policy. We put it here years ago, but we're realizing it probably needed to be its own regulation. So what we've done in this particular regulation is we took out threats against a person, you're going to see that in the next policy I'm going to show you. We also took out threat assessments, so we've moved them into other policies to make it a little bit clearer of what's going to happen. So this regulation, 536.2, will deal with the false alarms and bomb threats and 911. We don't get a lot of them, but we do still get those, so we left that as a regulation in there. Then you move on to policy 543. This is a new policy. So after much discussion, I realized it was time for us to have our own policy on threats. Unfortunately, some of the threats we're seeing are, are pretty substantial and they are very disruptive to us, so we decided to rewrite an entire policy for you on this one. I was not able to find a good example out in the community, so this we created, and we worked through both the school administration and through the policy review committee. So now we've talked about, again, the jurisdictional piece on it to make it very clear that you make a threat outside of the school environment and it's up to the educational environment, we're also going to deal with it. We are not limiting our threats to oral and written threats because that is outdated again, so we just general the nature of the threat, that one of the things that one of the judges mentioned to us in a threat case was that you need to make it clear, what do you consider a threat? And then how somebody going to know? Because the judge wanted to know, how does the school board make a judgment as to this is a threat on this one? So I want to know what criteria you as a school board are using on there. That you'll see in subsection B, what constitutes a threat here. So we've spelled out a little bit clearer to them. It would also make it clear to parents and families who think a threat is just a minor issue to us, don't understand what we're judging from that. Again, a threat, you know, a parent thinks it's a normal juvenile thing to do. For us, they don't realize the impact that a threat can have on our educational environment. So we've gone ahead and spelled that out. We also spelled out in subsection C, the discipline and the need for a threat assessment. So again, this is a whole new policy for us. I think it will reflect better how you look at your discipline cases. It will both give you and the principals a better ability to explain to a family why you are disciplining them and what criteria you're using. And again, we've had two cases recently in state court where that became obvious to us that we needed a better explanation so the judge could determine whether you were making an appropriate decision. And that would be a whole new policy for you. And last, we took in 543.1 regulation. So the threat assessment procedures you saw before with the, the false alarm fire one, we just dropped it down to its own regulation. It is very significant. The state has these procedures in place, and we do use this procedure a lot. We thought we'd give a little bit more responsiveness and priority to it by placing in its own regulation. So we simply took it out of the last regulation. We put it in its own procedure back here, or its own regulation back here. So it's not a change in this thing, it just appears as a new regulation. We think looking at those, that this will be a better way for you to deal with the threat questions coming up and for the public to understand, and parents and students to understand that how you are going to handle threat matters on there. And we'll be bringing in one or two more regulations you'll be seeing in this area. We're cleaning up your student discipline regulations to more accurately reflect what you're seeing currently in the student discipline thing, so it will be coming to you the next couple of months. Any questions I can answer for you at this time?
Do we have any questions? On the board? Thank you, Ms. Lanetti.
Thank you.
At this time, the chair will recognize members that have a standing committee report. Mr. McDonald?
The legislative committee met this afternoon to begin our process of drafting the legislative agenda for the 2019 session. We're a little behind because of being shut down for the weather, but we hope to stay on schedule. Members of the committee don't know this, but we'll be meeting the afternoon in the next school board meeting. We didn't get to wrap up some final notes during our meeting today because our workshop started right at four. But we will also be extending invitations to our delegation for Take Your Legislature to the School Month during November. Non-legislative committee board members will have an opportunity to join us for those visits, and a schedule of those opportunities will be forthcoming as we build it out.
Are there any others? Mrs. Riggs?
I just want to report that the sister cities committee had a tent, a booth at the Philfest, the festival this past weekend representing our, our committee and the association. We also have sent out, and I know I've said this before, but I'll probably say it until we get one. We have sent this information out through Mr. Keever and the school principals about our upcoming school youth ambassador. And so that is out there. We're hoping to get enough applications so we can have a competition of who will be chosen for that this coming year. And the, the deadline is the 24th of November. I think it's the 24th. But anyway, I'm, we're reaching out to each one of our principals as well and touching base with them to hopefully get a good pool of candidates for this.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs. Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two standing committee reports, and I had to report that the Equity Council met on September 27th, and the feature discussion was centered around the connection institution. We had over 150-plus representative in that community, within that, my mind went blank, but that particular program, it was sponsored by Virginia Center for Inclusive Community. We had over 150-plus participants in that, and they will be giving us a report throughout the year, how they're going to implement those things that they learned in the institution. Also, I had the privilege to meet at my first WHRO meeting. I met Dr. Spence, he was very informative. A lot went- A lot went on, a lot was discussed. Mr. James Lane, the Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, was there, and he gave a detailed description on the things we just discussed tonight about the standard and federal learning quality. But my great takeaway from this whole presentation was the theme that they have going on, partnered with American Evolution. And it's our American story, a student contest from American Evolution. And it is our American story, and they're asking students to participate in this particular essay. And it is called, "We Are Democracy." And they will be writing on three components, which is democracy, diversity, and opportunity across the discipline. The grand prize team will be awarded $9,000 in cash and prizes for their school association, and 10 other prizes will be awarded in each of these themes. Dr. Spence came away with a box of goodies that he's going to give to the leadership department, and they only showed us maybe three minutes of the segment of the video, and I was really impressed. And I look to see forward to some of our students participating in this, our American story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Do we have any other standing committee? Mr. Edwards?
The audit committee met 12 days ago, and we have completed. The staff has completed and the committee has reviewed. The activity fund audits from all of our schools, it's a very big project that spans mostly over the summer, and we wrap it up now. Those reports are on file on the SharePoint. Encourage anybody that wants to look at it. It represents several million dollars' worth of funds that are held on account for all the things that go on at the school level. And that was the main accomplishment. We've got some ongoing audits as well.
That concludes our formal meeting.